I call the Charlottesville City Council a meeting to order. This is a budget work session for outside and nonprofit agencies. Madam Clerk, you want to do the roll call?
I'll just note all councilors are present for this meeting.
Thank you, and so we're going to start off with. City Manager Sanders will kind of kick us off. Chrissy is going to kick us off, okay?
So, good evening, this is budget work session number two. Tonight, we're going to be talking about contributions to nonprofit and outside agencies. We have staff here tonight who will be doing presentations there. The group that lead those programs. And so, just to kind of go over our agenda. So, we'll talk about the Vibrant Community Fund first. The HOPS, or Housing Operations and Program Support Program. Going to talk about pathways. Talk a little bit about fundamental agencies. We have a couple of adjustments that we know in the budget for intergovernmental agency. Two agencies. Going to talk about off-cycle requests. And then, a date change for public hearing. So with that, I will turn it over to Hunter, who will start with vibrant community.
Hello, everyone. Hunter Smith, I'm the Human Services Planner, Human Services Department. I'm just going to go through the slides. Just kind of basically read what's up there. The FY26 process developed based largely on applicant review feedback that we did in the summer. Most recent summer. Feedback sessions and they made suggestions and incorporated ones that we could. Priority areas for FY26 were based on the City Council's strategic plan. It included the following categories: education, youth and family, economic impact and jobs, and health and public safety. Applicants were able to select up to two of those categories per program. Arts and cultural programming are also included in the process. Arts and cultural events were moved to a different process during the, while we were doing evaluations. Information sessions and orientations for applicants were offered both in-person and virtually prior to the release date of recordings available, along with weekly office hours during the open application period. Orientation for review panel members were held this year, and we had a larger number of panel members. Office of Community Solutions conducted reviews on questions related to financial matters and outcomes. So, we had a split review process this year. We had committed citizens, and we had some staff doing some reviews too. There are also office hours available for the reviewers as well, should they have needed them. For FY26, we added a, we instituted a $20,000 cap per organization. That's a new feature that we added this year after last year's process. This year, we had a total of 87 applicants for the 26 process. Seven of those applications were moved to a different funding process based on the application type, which I mentioned was the cultural arts events. The pool settled at 80, talking about taking into consideration what was removed. For FY26, the scoring process was adjusted to generate a single numeric score based on panel and the Office of Community Solutions reviews. Questions focused on application and program quality, as well as questions related to program feasibility and community impact to generate the numerical score. So, if you were the 2A kind of grid, that was a little bit complex. So, we moved that into a just single numeric score, with the same type of things being asked. Next slide, please. As part of the OCS, Office of Community Solutions review process, applications were given bonus points for their alignment with the strategic outcome areas. The maximum amount of bonus points an application could receive was 10, which brought the total application score to 110. Strategic outcome areas were divided into three tiers based on the City Manager's prioritization for his work plan. Points were wooded as follows. Not going to reveal that. We can see what they are. They have a range of scores based on what the priority areas are. Next slide, please, Chrissy, or whoever has it. This is just a quick chart to show the difference between FY25 to 26. We do have a $2.6 million available budget. So, last year, we had a total of 3.774. Requested this year, it went up to 5.18. And so, we had a $1.4 million increase in total requests from year to year, including 14 new applications. That number is, we left the total 80. I said earlier, we moved some applications around, but we did have that many more applications. And that's what the fundamental groups removed out of it. So, it would have been, you know, much higher having left those in there. So, we'd have more people apply. Next slide. As part of the report that's on the budget page, we didn't bring the whole report to the presentation. It's rather lengthy. This was the breakdown of how we, how people fell into tiers. There were 17 applications at tier one, which received a 88% funding amount. We had 38 at tier two, which got a 47% amount of their request. And we had a tier three, which got 25% of their requested amount. And you can see the totals. They are tier four, did not receive funding for whatever programs that fell into those tiers. And, next slide. This year, we had 31 community members and staff reviewers, not including the work done by the staff at the Office of Community Solutions. We do want to sincerely thank the folks that do this. It is a pretty rigorous process. And if anyone is out there listening, which I'm not sure if they are, Latara Ragland may be out there. Thank you very much for your time that you put into this this year. If anybody has any questions or comments, I'm relatively available for those.
And I just want to add to my gratitude to Hunter and his colleague Reggie Allen, who's the, also a human services planner, who reviewed the arts and culture process this year. A lot of work goes into the process, a lot of coordinating, a lot of logistic to make sure that everybody attends the meetings and knows how to review and the orientation. And in addition to that, right after this, we start process improvement. And we look at getting feedback from not only the reviewers about their experience reviewing and make improvements. But we also reach out to folks who may need some technical assistance and other applicants about their experience with the process. So, it is a year-long endeavor, and we are grateful for the opportunity to provide that body of work for your all consideration.
So, were there any, did you have, you all had the packet, you had the listing, you got to see who fell into which tier. Were there any areas of discussion as you saw it in that list? That's the first question that I have for you.
Can you explain the arts and?
Arts and culture, arts and?
Events versus programming?
Yeah. Yeah, so, the slide that you have in front of you now is me recommending a change to our process. One for what I consider to be cleaning it up a little bit. And at the same time, it means a little more money is available for some of the program-related things. So, I'm recommending that you support the use of the City Manager's discretionary fund that I brought to your attention as a part of the budget presentation. That the interim City Manager, Michael Rogers, allocated $500,000 as a discretionary account one time. That account has not been utilized at this point. And it was my desire to activate it because as Chrissy and I have been checking all the couch cushions for every dollar we can find to put this budget together. One thing was that I did not want to allow any more funds to sit dormant, that just sit with money in them and not being used. So, I'm activating the use of that fund. The intent that I have behind that is to use it over the next two years to establish what that, what's the right amount for this discretionary fund, to address things that don't really fit into what I consider to be a competitive category. So, this list that you have in front of you is a list of individuals who have historically applied through VCF. They've been a part of a, I guess, a secondary, separate look, maybe?
Arts and culture was reviewed a little bit differently than the other programs.
So, looked at a little bit differently. I basically say, that's unnecessary. Let's just not do that. Let that money go back and use it for some of the programmatic-related activities. So, that was part of what they were able to redistribute. And instead, I am adding each of these as line items for the beginning use of the discretionary fund. So, what you see there that's highlighted is the amount that I have selected for each one of these particular activities to receive. For now, we may ask questions and get a little bit more detail about the scope of their projects and what is that they're doing. May change those. The last one, it says very Asian VA. I have questions, don't know much, and there's a lot that I'd like to look at in regards to the proposal since it was the largest of all of them at $47,500. Wanted to get a feel for what is that event? What is the scope? What other partners and funders are involved in that process before making a commitment? So, ideally, what we did is we created an off-ramp for this set of events. Cultural event-related activities, pulled it out of VCF. I have it in the discretionary fund, and those funds were then redistributed amongst other people within VCF.
Yeah, so, on page one of the, page two of the packet, the report from VCF. Fiscal year 2026 information for FY26, the city received 80 applications for funding, including 16 from arts and cultural organizations, and six applicants for arts and cultural events.
There's likely a, well, sorry.
FY26, those applications were included in the same. I guess I'm still struggling to understand how things?
Which page are you on?
Page two. The first full page of the VCF report.
Okay, and now, what are you reading?
The final paragraph.
Yeah, it says FY26, the city received 80 applications and funding included 16 applications from arts and cultural organizations for, and six applications for arts and cultural events. The six arts and cultural events are these that were pulled out. And then, the arts and culture programs are still in VCF because they're programmed. So, we left program-related activities in VCF.
Program versus events, okay.
I pulled events out. That was what I was looking for.
The variation that six or seven may have just been a, probably a self-identified, it was a correction made.
Is, and this might be something we discuss later, or I missed it. How does TomTom ask us for money?
So, they're more of a direct appeal. We've looked at them in different ways. They've been part of an economic development request, as well as just a direct request to the City Manager. I have funded that request already, and out of, I don't remember where, but we funded it already. The plan would be that it would join this discretionary fund going forward.
Okay. I was looking for it in the initial list, and wasn't sure if that was a separate process. Okay, thank you.
Part of what I'm doing here, and this is a message to everyone in this room and those that are watching and listening from wherever, changes are coming. I have found time so I can make changes, so just get ready. The goal is to try to streamline, to make things more simple and clear. So, that's really, and as clean as possible. So, that's why, this is not punishment in any way. The desire was to, let's just take that off the table because it's event-related. We can make a different decision and consider those separate from programmatic activities and allow the competitive process using community reviewers in a very different way, is really the point. So, if you have no issues with what you saw on the VCF list, we are thrilled. That's number one. And if you support the idea of what I'm planning to do here, which I told you I was planning to use the discretionary fund, and this is part one, if we're done.
Well, yes, yes and no. I mean, it's, generally speaking, it's fine, is some of them, you know, have some suggestions for additional funding? But is that what you want?
So, I'll tell you that part of the, at the end of tonight, I have other money, because we didn't list it specifically, that your strategic initiatives fund. We're going to talk about it specifically. We're going to talk about off-cycle requests, which are requests that exceed the VCF round, did not come in during the VCF round. This is the one shot for those, for those to be considered. There's more money, there's less money than is available, less money than the amount of funds that have been requested. So, that means you have a decision to make. If you wanted to select anyone off the VCF list that was not funded, that's what that pot would be for as well. And if you want to add more to a different funding decision, I would say you would do that there as well. Because we continue to support the idea that the community reviewer work that's been done, the goal is for you to accept that as the work has been done for you to prioritize and make the best recommendation available. And then, if you have any other itch that you want to scratch, then that's why I have some free money for you to be able to do that with.
So, it's funny because I was on?
That's a technical term.
That end, you know, as a reviewer for 20-some years, and I was like, they should go with what we say. We put all the hours into it, but here I am.
We hear that, we've heard that. That's part of what we're trying to do. We're trying to respect the recommendation for the work that was involved, yes.
So, we haven't gotten tons of feedback?
Yes.
From organizations yet? Are we going to hear some of that?
Public comment tonight, yes. That's why they're here.
I mean, we got some, definitely got some emails, but?
Got a couple, but not, not as much as it felt like we got last year.
It's smoothing out because it's not as much as we have done.
And when I say conclude part one, like, that's just meaning for tonight. Until you adopt the budget, it's not done.
Can I add one more?
Yeah.
I want to add too, I didn't put it in the presentation, but the overall percentages per tier are also much lower. And so, in addition to folks not maybe getting the tier they want, and essentially, in the years past, there were also three tiers. We had four categories with two of the same percentage, just the way we did it. I just want to point out that the overall ask is increasing dramatically. And I'm not making any play for any, I just want to point that out. So, recipients are also seeing like a top-tier program getting 80%, or they used to get 95 or higher. So, that's another factor that is, that I'm hearing about from people as well. I also want to make that point. It wasn't report-worthy, but it is an observation that I.
Sure.
I noticed in the proposal summary, there's a couple of categories for TJPDC, and they're unfunded. Do we, they're still going to be able to function? Like, do we pay them a different way?
Yeah.
TJPDC or not?
Intergovernmental. They're in government. Okay, so, because it's still, it says they get $0, and I wasn't, I didn't.
Did they ask for something specific?
I think, this is separate from the Excel spreadsheet, but the other?
The 60-page?
I think there's just confusion over?
Because it's listed with everything else.
Intergovernmental applications still go in through Zoom grants. So, that is the software that we use. And so, when Hunter pulled the proposal, you're going to see a list of all of the VCF applications plus the intergovernmental, plus the fundamental, if that makes sense.
Not all of the intergovernmental, but some.
Okay, because I?
They're all combined together just because that's where, that's the central place in which they apply.
They were important enough to get zero, more than $0, so.
So, we don't make the funding recommendations for the intergovernmental. That's up to budget and Sam.
And listed somewhere else.
Mm-hmm.
Got it, okay.
And I think they were fully funded in all of theirs.
Yeah, I would assume and hope so.
Yes, they're on the, they're on the, is it intergovernmental? Yeah, they were funded.
Great, okay, thank you.
Brian, do you have? Lloyd, I know you had some?
Well, yeah, and I, some of the questions got answered by email, and some, the response wasn't real clear. And I would need to go through and figure out how the, how the responses fit to my questions. There are, and I guess there may be some of these things that we're going to be talking about. Well, just as an example, if, one of the things I had noted that had a zero in it was four of Blue Ridge Culture Homeless. And I see that that's coming in under HOPS, which until this moment, I had not seen. And there may be other things like that on this list, maybe on the intergovernmental.
Most of those are.
Do we have that as of tonight?
Those are in the budget book. We didn't bring those up because we showed it in the budget changes last week, so we're not talking about those tonight, but they are in the budget book.
Are the only things that are Vibrant Community Fund that are basically getting zeroed are the things on this, this one, page eight? The grid that appears in this report?
I will also say, this is on my end, I tried to use a technological feature of Zoom Grants to create that list for you all, and it did not work. It included organizations that shouldn't have been there. So, that was 100% on me and my friend Zoom Grants. So, that was a reporting error of mine.
Thanks.
Just to be clear about that.
So, anything that is in our intergovernmental category or fundamental category is separately considered. That's not tonight's conversation. That's, you would have that in the budget book as presented when I presented the budget. That was all a part of that package. So, for VCF, it's just the summary report that you would look at there. And there are, what did we say, 14? 14 organizations that had zero. That's the list, if you're looking to see who was not funded, that's the place to look into the Vibrant Community Summary document. Where the chart is.
So, as I'm looking at some of the documents, some of the organizations that apparently didn't get funded, but apparently, but don't seem to be on this list. And there are nine on this list that didn't get funded. You've mentioned 14. I'm not sure where the other five, unless they're on the next page.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're on the next page.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
You know, I spent, I spent about four hours with this, I think, on Sunday night, and was very much confused by the different documents that we had been given. There are, I think, if I'm looking at this correctly, so there are two or three organizations that, three arts organizations that are not even mentioned in one of the spreadsheets. Charlottesville Contemporary Arts, Charlottesville Opera, and Live Arts. And I'm wondering, did those get considered in some other bin? Or?
Live Arts is fundamental, I believe. Is that right?
Charlottesville Contemporary Arts is in intergovernmental.
Live?
Live Arts. It's always been.
I see Charlottesville Opera on this page.
It's on that list.
But it's funded at 9,400, and it's under outside agencies and nonprofits, but it's not intergovernmental or fundamental, so.
Those on the V, Live Arts was on VCF, wasn't it, Hunter?
Yes.
Yeah.
In the budget book, the contribution, contributions to outside agencies is on page 167. So, you can see who is in what category, if that's also helpful. 167 in the budget book. It starts with the list of who are designated as intergovernmental. And then, following that list is fundamental agencies, and a collection of who is designated as fundamental. And then, it goes to indicate the Vibrant Community Fund.
Okay.
And then, as you sort of look through the spreadsheet that follows, you'll see how agencies have sort of stacked up over a period of time. FY22, 23, 24, what was adopted this fiscal year, what was proposed. You sort of see all that in one chart.
Okay.
On the, on the Excel sheet there doesn't necessarily show the designation intergovernmental or fundamental or Vibrant Community Fund. And maybe that's something that we look into for next year, so you can sort of see.
Where they are.
Maybe color-code it by category. Right now, they're categorized by type.
I don't, I don't care as much which pot of money they're coming from, just as long as I understand that they are all at least being considered in one pot or another. And when we're being asked to comment on the choices to be made under the Vibrant Community Fund, like, before we know what some of the other pots of money may be, I'd say I'm, it is not for lack of trying that I am confused.
So, I guess the, what's the question? At this point, what's your question?
Well, and I guess, I'm just going to have to say, I can't answer your question because I don't, I didn't realize that I also needed to have mastered this book in addition to the 80 pages that you gave me over the weekend.
Okay.
So, I don't have any other questions, because I'm going to have to see whether the questions got answered.
Are you looking for more specific organizations on whether or not they appear on A-list? And we can confirm that? And maybe that'll bring some clarity?
Well, see, I, the email that you sent arrived late last night, and it actually didn't show up. Only the first part showed up on my phone. The message that you were passing along from Misty, which had some detail, didn't show up on my phone. So, I didn't get to see it until about 4 o'clock this afternoon. So, I don't, I'm going to beg off and say, I don't, I don't really know. But I'm going to spend some more time on it now that I've.
We can take the? We can take the questions. We can go one by one with the questions and make sure, I mean, others will benefit.
I'll just, one, one question there. I'm trying to figure out. Okay, well, there's one. Okay, well, there's one answer. There's another answer. Okay, I, I see the answers. Interesting. Okay. Some of the numbers don't match up to anything else on any of the other documents, but I'll figure that out. Okay. Nothing further.
Okay.
Michael, do you have anything right now you want to?
Um, one, I just want to confirm, just like for the public's information, the vibrant community fund report that's ten pages, at the end of it, it says summary of applications. The following session contains summaries. That's not below. I couldn't figure out, is that supposed to be there or not, just for the public's?
I want to say what I said earlier. I've really tried to use Zoom grants to make this simpler and it is clear from Mr. Snook's comments, it did not work.
Yeah. I just highlight that because that's what the public can see.
Yes. So we, there is a secondary report that goes along with it that identifies each, each application's like summary, what they requested, what the outcome is and what the funding impact was, those answers to those questions. But I'm realizing now that it did not work to the level that I wanted it to work. It looked good to me, I mean, honestly, it looked good to me because I know what I'm looking at. I know what I look, what to look for.
Well, that's all good, because I know last year we requested more specific information than we get it and now we're confused.
Yes. So, you know, I probably should stick to my gut and not rely on technology. It's my typical how I live my life normally. But in this case, it, it did not make it easier for you, so I understand that. I hear it and I can, I can repair that for you probably by tomorrow afternoon.
And like, like I said, like, like all good, I just wanted to, just because that's like on the city's budget website. I mean, I think similar to, to the mayor's feedback, I mean, there are some, you know, items, you know, I'd be open to adjustments, but you know, more in there of like, you know, a couple tens of thousands of dollars here and there, not to minimize that, but looking through it, I don't think there was anything, you know, huge in terms of like hundreds of thousands of dollars or a fundamental adjustment that I saw as being needed. I think, you know, I think the intergovernmental and fundamental agencies combined with the tiering, you know, kind of the framework I was thinking of is how could we kind of prioritize, try to guess, you know, needs that may come up in this new federal environment and how do we prioritize what may be there with things like meals on wheels, homelessness, community care services. But I thought a lot of that was captured in it. But again, I am open to, you know, some smaller adjustments, but there were none that I was like, you know, something fundamental needs to change in terms of the, the allocations. Yeah, so I guess that was my, my first. And similar to Lloyd, I, I realized my Rosetta Stone was just reading the, the budget book, but before that, you know, I was also, I was like, why is John in here? It's like, it all came together, but, um, yeah.
Got it. We can present differently. Yeah. The one thing that was brought up was the request for eviction protection. We'll talk about that separately. That's a separate.
And I'll, I'll also add, the, the suggestions you made at the end seemed reasonable to me and I would be supportive of.
For the arts?
Correct.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, looking through this, um, you know, I'm, I'm real happy with it. I, you know, I'm a big advocate for mentoring kind of the motive, if we can, you know, prevent some of the issues that we have by working with young people. And I see a lot of the programs, like C-4K and some of our programs are being funded. I would like to see more funded for the Boys and Girls Club. I like, I like, you know, they, I mean, they just do so much for the youth in the, the community, so many of them depend on that, you know, as we go through this, I definitely like to see more with that. I like the more, the, the Lighthouse Studio, the, the programs they have there. And a new one that I'm really interested in learning more about is WOW, WOW Rock. I mean, it's not new, but maybe I haven't noticed them submitting anything before, but, um, but, um, I'm really happy with the work that was done. I mean, this is a lot more than when, when I was doing it a long time ago, but great work, great work. And, and I just want to publicly realize, you know, like, our budget's like two hundred and fifty, hundred, two hundred and sixty.
Two sixty.
Two sixty. But the amount of time and commitment we put into, again, like you said, Michael, not that we are demeaning it, but you know, you know, two to three million dollars, that is what the engagement of this community looks like and that's what we want. So that being said, we still have a lot of discussion over the next month because we have to adopt it, Chris, on the fourteenth, April fourteenth, so it's about a month from today, so we have a lot of work to do between now and then. So are we going to get the HOPS report now or public?
I've got a question.
I'm sorry.
Thanks. Can you remind, I, I saw the email, but I didn't really get, wrap my head around it. The, we, the ninety-six thousand available isn't real? Okay.
That's not real.
Okay.
That was spent.
Just wanted to clarify, is there?
I have replacements for it.
There's some, and how, how much?
A lot more. We're going to talk about.
We're going to talk about that today?
Today.
Okay. Great. Carry on. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, I think that's all our comments now for the community fund.
All right.
Good evening.
I appreciate this opportunity to walk you through the HOPS program or housing operations and program support process for FY twenty-six. This program was designed to support nonprofit organizations focused on affordable housing and homelessness prevention by providing operational and program support funding specifically. We are now in the third year of this program of, of funding. I'll be sharing an overview of the application, typical processes, some considerations and key takeaways. Thank you. So for FY twenty-six, the city issued the notice of funding of availability, NOFA, in August. Prior to, let's say, actually, yeah, prior to the NOFA being issued, we had one workshop and then after the NOFA being issued, we had another workshop and then a kickoff meeting with the CAF committee. After the NOFA was published, applications were due around mid-October. We received about sixteen applications, sixteen exactly, with a request totaling one point four seven million dollars. However, however, the funding budget for this program is five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and it's funded, it's funded in the CAF fund line item of the budget. This is, um, this meant that the committee had to evaluate the applications very carefully. They prioritized the applications around the alignments you see below and essentially in three distinct areas of emphasis, the program effectiveness, overall, overall organizational strength and community alignment. Those categories that are beneath those buckets, if you will, were arrived at through deliberation with the CAF committee, also aligning it to the CAF policy, the Affordable Housing Plan and other city policy preferences. Next slide, please. So one of the first steps is once we receive the applications in the close of October is to ensure completeness. Applications that are received incomplete or after the deadline are not considered. Then from there, the committee goes through a process of grouping the applications in a category from A, B, C. Those categories are detailed there. In this round, out of the applications received, seven applications received an A, seven received A, five received a grade or score of B. One application was ranked in the C category. Only groups A and B move forward and typically they can score anywhere from zero to one hundred five points in the next round. Next slide, please. So the scoring is evaluated across these twenty-three factors, if you will, and seven key area, areas. The lowest score received was seventy-eight, the highest was a hundred and one. As I mentioned, the top, the, the top applications move forward and no, no determination is made, funding, all determinations are subject to funding availability. The committee submits its award level options to council. Staff prepares a report. The actual type report to this presentation requires some additional editing beyond tonight, but in general, it outlines where the CAF committee landed in terms of their funding levels of support for each application. Again, no, no funding is guaranteed or finalized until you all have had the chance to discuss the, the item and the executive team reviews the item and context to the budget constraints and considerations. Next slide, please. So with that, out of the applications that moved forward to the scoring, based on scoring and availability of funding, this is where the CAF committee landed in terms of how to best stretch that five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over what could be potential applications to consider applicants for you to, to fund. As it sits with this table, the recommendations cover from fifteen to about seventy-three percent of the requested amount. This presentation of listed applicants at this stage requires additional conversations, which the city manager will highlight shortly, but we can move to the next slide. Wait, am I missing a slide? Go back one, please? Okay, I guess not. Go forward, that was the right slide. So post-award, for, for those awarded funds, the next steps are clear. The agreements must be signed within three months of council approval. Funds must be used within twenty-four hours, excuse me, within twenty-four months.
Wow.
Twenty-four months.
Challenge.
Challenge accepted. No, twenty, twenty-four months. There, there are remedies for extensions when it is required, but twenty-four months is the deadline to ensure that the funds are used before the next fiscal budget turns over. Quarterly reporting is required. Happy to say with some adjustments we've done with the grants team and OCS team, we now are at about seventy-five to eighty percent compliance rate with regards to HOPS reporting and CAF. So whereas before it was forty, fifty, maybe if they turned in an application or, or, excuse me, a report. So folks are getting adjusted to the new rules, the new sense of reporting as it could affect future applications, so that's something to celebrate. And then another trend I think worth noticing is if you see the difference between FY twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six, the success rate with applications have, has improved. It dropped to fifty-seven percent in twenty-five, but it went, went back up to sixty-nine percent. We met and we reorganized the application, made it more user-friendly, spelled out things a little bit clearer and our feedback from the applicants was that this round was much, much more user-friendly, so we think that that helped. Next slide.
Can I actually ask a quick question about that? How come the, the data for twenty-four doesn't exist?
It exists, it's, it's just, it wasn't, uh, that report was written before I, I joined the city, but, so we didn't pull that information out yet. So it's available by the next time that you see the actual written report. So presidential funding requests covered only about thirty-four percent of the funds. To no surprise, we are continually to see, we continue to see higher requests, higher volume of requests year over year. But yet we still see that, that through the committee's effort and doing some retooling of the application that we are getting closer to prioritization of points that matter to, to this program. So we do see some, some pain points in that and, and, you know, tighten the belt on some things, but it, we're seeing it on the backend and the dividends where we want it to pay off, so. With that, I'll turn it over to the city manager if there's any follow-up questions to some things that I, I covered, I'm happy to go over them. So I have a couple of slides coming up next, but I wanted to just check with you to see is there anything that you have as a question on what you just heard from Antoine specifically?
I mean, I'm curious to see the full report and also see kind of who wasn't funded at all, as well as, you know, see what the, the CAF allocations were, because I think, you know, if we didn't fund someone in HOPS with another, you know, pool of money, I think that's relevant in terms of the amount of support that we're, we're trying to provide just given the amount of requests is far greater than the amount of money we have. You know, the first, first reaction, I know it's, you know, a ton of applications for, you know, all, for all things considered, you know, very limited pool of money. So, you know, I have no idea on first look, you know, what, if anything, you know, I would shift around, except just to say, you know, I think the need for case management and homelessness services, I think is going to explode over the next year, just even looking at like, you know, potentially what could happen with Medicaid expansion in Virginia. So just as best we can trying to prioritize that, that need and, you know, what these shocks are going to do to, you know, our community. But, yeah. And this is not something I need this budget cycle or any of us, you know, would need, but I'm curious to see over time the compliance rate in, of, of different nonprofits, because I think that would be, or recipients, I think that would be an interesting data point just for council to see and think about and be aware of.
When you say compliance, are you referring to our expectations of compliance or?
Correct. I, what you had referenced in terms of it.
So when we had hired our compliance coordinator, we started building out a framework, looking at the agreements, making sure we're tracking those deliverables, measuring that against the time when they are supposed to report out, you know, we're also tracking that. So the goal is to be able to have that information readily available at the end of the year for annual reporting. So we're getting there.
Okay.
We're getting there. All right. So I have three additional slides and I know it's going to, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Quick, quick question. For the, for BRAC, I see that they got recommended twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, but they also have funding.
That's coming up. That's where I'm going next.
Okay. I was just wondering if that was an addition or inclusive.
Yep. You're on it. You're reading my mind.
Thanks.
All right. So I'm going to add confusion because we confuse ourselves because we do too many things and that's all of us, not just staff, but that's all of us. So I'm, again, working to simplify, streamline, clean up process. The slide that you have in front of you here, I have identified two of the requests that are within HOPS that I am suggesting to you to not fund because you are funding them already in what has been recommended to you from me as a proposed budget for FY twenty-six. So it's not punishing, it is meant to still commit to what it is that we've said by giving them fundamental designation. So FAR is scheduled to receive sixty-eight thousand dollars as a fundamental designation is why I'm suggesting that we not put the thirteen thousand nine fifty in for them specifically and BRAC is added on your fundamental list at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support capacity overall. So this twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars is also what I'm suggesting to you. In this moment, pull both of those amounts out, so that's forty-one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. That becomes a part of this surplus pool that I'm now referencing and I'm proposing to do that with CDBG and CAF as well. I'll show you those slides next. And that begins to build this, this fund that I'm saying to you is available for your discretion to go back, back through VCF or other places, if you so choose, to add any additional amounts to anyone. After you hear from everyone today, you might choose to put something in that category. These would be then funds available to do that with.
Is the, the designation and suggestion for FAR and BRAC for the greater amounts as fundamental agencies, was that decided after they had gone through this application process or?
It was simultaneous technically. I mean, well, FAR because they were designated.
I mean, well, FAR because they were designated last year.
Okay, so I.
So we designated them last year.
Yeah, so the reason why I ask is because I'm wondering if they, like, do they have to go through this process?
Well, that's part of what I'm offering in the way of cleanup. This would also be notice to everyone about a change that we plan to make solid in our upcoming technical assistance round is that if you're a fundamental agency, you would not come through the competitive portal.
Okay, so this is.
You would make your ask through the normal process that you would follow as a fundamental.
This is potentially the last year they would have to do that.
So that we're not causing this kind of confusion in future.
Right, and then the, the HOPS process would have that funds, that funding to allocate without having to
Yes.
Come to us and go back.
Exactly.
Got it, okay.
Yep, simplifying the process where possible. So what will happen is if FAR wanted to say that the request that we would like to make is $93,000, which their fundamental request was higher than was funded, they would be in the fundamental category with all the other non-competitive applications, which is a process that Ms. Hamel goes through as a review with her team and then I ultimately make the final decision for what gets increased or not as a part of the budget proposal.
I like the support for FAR. I went to their meeting this week and as you saw afterwards, I had a list of requests and suggestions they had to make the city better. And just to side, you know, at the meeting, one of the wonderful things that they do, that Joy Johnson, this chair that she has them to do, is that they are in unison, read off their, the mission of the organization. I really, I really like that, so. And, but anyway, so I'm glad for this change and I'm supportive of it, so.
Anything on this before we move to the next slide? And we can always come back and revisit any number that you see next to any organization's name later. All right, next, and this is where the confusion comes in because we're going to talk about CAF, which is not what we normally talk about tonight. That is on your agenda for Monday. You will get the list of awardees that are being recommended through the traditional CAF process, which is current year's budget that's being spent, whereas what we're talking about tonight is next year's budget to be spent. What happened in the CAF round was that the committee had an excess of $35,000 available. So they split that $17,500 and added a top two of the awards. So therefore, those individuals were going to be given $17,500 more than what they requested. I said no and recommend that we take that off. If we gave them a full award, we give them a full award. We take the $35,000 and consider that surplus and allow you the flexibility to distribute that money instead. So that's what that is.
So you're just giving us that as prep?
Giving you that as prep.
Be on the lookout for Monday.
Yes.
Thanks.
And next is CDBG. We had 10 proposals that were received requesting $742,000. We don't have that much available, but we have three proposals that were submitted that are being deemed as ineligible and the reasons are in red. The eviction diversion program feels as though it's a pathways duplication because we have actually helped CRHA tenants through paying their bills that way. The Dogwood portfolio roof replacements, though the need for any funding for roof replacements for the Dogwood portfolio should come out of the reserves. So that's a different conversation that we believe we should have with CRHA.
What reserves?
From the, the portfolio is, the Dogwood portfolio is the series of homes that we own in partnership with CRHA. The reserves would be the net after we pay any bills. So that is really more of a maintenance plan and that should come as a part of the annual presentation to you all as to how that portfolio is performing. And if there's a need for an investment, then that ask should be made at that time. And then last is, again, FAR is on this list, so this is yet another list for them to be on. And ultimately, you may want to add more to FAR is what it feels like this would say to you. That's your choice, but ultimately what I'm doing is being even-handed across, if it's ineligible, it's not available, take that money out. When we take those funds out, the remaining three proposals, the remaining seven proposals could be funded the full amount if the committee so desires, but simple action would allow $86,000 to be available for you to allocate at your discretion. So that's the basis for why the recommendation is what it is. Questions about that?
I was about to ask a question about pathways, but I see it's the next slide.
I'm building up to something.
Thanks.
So ultimately what I'm gonna do is we're gonna have the pathways conversation next and then I'll come right behind that and show you what is the discretionary pool that we're talking about that is available to you. And that is the amount of money that is available for you to go back and undo anything that I've recommended if you so choose or anything that you might want to change from what the committee recommendations were as a part of VCF. It was my desire that I bring you the opportunity to have resources available to be comfortable with this process once it's said and done. And that meant that there had to be flexible dollars available for you all to make some of those decisions instead of everything being presented to you in a more rigid fashion as we have, very much in a very disciplined and orderly approach as what we were expected to do. There's a need for that flexibility, I believe, because you all want to make sure that certain groups are funded.
Well, I was gonna say so far it's kind of, it's just hard to evaluate because it's the first time we're getting HOPS and CAF information is right now. So I'm just trying to think through kind of the differences between the scale of what each one requested and what they're wanting to do and kind of how it works across these three pools of money. So, you know, I'm not sure I have specific feedback on which number should be.
Okay.
I'm not saying.
And we're not looking for you to make those decisions tonight. That's, that's not the ask. This is really giving you the information and we'll work with you on that.
And I, and I don't know what their application was and I'm not necessarily saying it should be funded, but I just note, I know the eviction diversion work that CRHA has been doing is distinct from pathways. Just this is a population of people who've already tapped out max amount of resources, who, you know, the last step is pursuing eviction. In some cases, they're pursuing eviction and that's the first time these residents will engage with CRHA, but they're trying to engage residents to not need to get to eviction. Or if even once an eviction is filed, you know, if that's the first time the resident finally engages with CRHA about setting up a payment plan, you know, not actually physically evicting them, they just got, you know, the notice. So I think there's not, I don't know if it's quite a duplication, but, but I didn't, that's without having read the application or knowing exactly.
Now we'll go to pathways.
It's my turn. Misty Graves, Director of the Department of Human Services. Good evening. I'm gonna be highlighting some of the work our department does related to pathways. Pathways Fund is the pot of money that goes towards providing folks with rental, mortgage, and utility bill relief once they become past due. The way that we operate that is through the Community Resource Hotline. And I have here the Self-Sufficiency Supervisor, Roxanne Jones, who supervises and oversees the staff and operations of pathways. So we have two hotline navigators, one administrative support staff, and then we also have acquired the call center software to manage the hotline. Wanted to make sure that you all were aware of the, how sort of FY '24 wrapped up. So we ended up expending one, a little over a million dollars in funding that went directly to landlords and utility companies. And we processed over 1,230 payments during that entire fiscal year. And just to recap on the eligibility criteria, it's for folks who are identified as low to moderate income and/or participate in federal programs such as TANF and SNAP. Again, this isn't for sort of paying ahead on rent or down payments or deposits. This is for folks that are in arrears on their rent, mortgage, and utilities. Currently, our caps are $1,000 per request, a limit to $2,000 annually, and a cap of $5,000 of lifetime. Next slide. Wanted to also provide you with sort of a snapshot of where we are right now, a little over halfway of our fiscal year. So you all invested $1 million into the Pathways Fund, which included direct disbursements and also the operational costs. So we ended up being able to, we've continued our partnership with United Way. They help us because they have very flexible ways to quickly process payment requests. So they've been really helpful as partners in endeavor. I feel like my mic's going and do I need to change that or is that just me? I'm okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So we sent over $700,000 to the United Way to help us with those. I'm not making things up.
No. I don't know, go for it.
Antoine's like, you're okay, and I'm like, oh. We also, so that meant we say, we carved out of that million dollars, the funding for staff and our software, and then we gave the money that's available for direct disbursements to the United Way. So far, we've already dispersed $500,000 this fiscal year, which is responding to 692 requests. We process about 19 payments per week. The average payment is $725. 30% of those requests are for utilities and the bulk are for housing-related requests. We sort of track weekly what our balance is to get us through the rest of this fiscal year. And so I sort of every week do some projections to see, are we gonna make it to June 30th without running out of funding? And twice, or two quarters, we were getting close to running out of money before we reached the next disbursement from the state to the United Way. So I requested advanced payments. I also utilized some of the ARPA dollars that was, you know, allocated to our Department for Emergency Housing Needs to that pot. So it actually raised that 700,000 to $776,000 in ARPA funds. So we're watching that. We're currently on track to have enough funding to get us through this current fiscal year. But I wanted to make sure you had some of that context, knowing FY '25 results, where we're currently, or FY '24, excuse me, how that wrapped up, where we are now in relation to our requests for FY '26. So the current budget consideration is the $1 million plus the difference in staff salary increases for FY '25. So basically adding a little bit to that fund because of the staff costs increasing. But that means that it's going to be the same amount for direct disbursements to the United Way. Next slide. Because we're sort of carefully tracking our spending, we may need to be mindful and proactive about changing and adjusting some of our expectations for FY '26. So one of the options is to continue the way that we've been doing our work with no changes to eligibility and basically just notify the public if the funds are depleted per quarter. We can also change the annual, or the monthly, excuse me, the annual maximums to 1,000. So instead of having folks have multiple requests up to $2,000, we would cap that annual request up to 1,000. That would obviously slow some disbursements. We could also say that because there are other opportunities out there to sort of mitigate utility payments through programs like energy share that the Salvation Army implements, we could just say this Pathways Fund is solely for rent and mortgage and utilities would not be covered or eligible under Pathways. That would slow some spending as well. And then we can also change our eligibility criteria to prioritize meeting requests for those that are noted the most vulnerable in our community. How is that sitting with you all? How can I be a resource? What questions do you have around the Community Resource Hotline and the Pathways one?
Maybe you said this and I didn't hear it, but do you have a sense of how many needs are not being met? In other words, are there requests coming in that were capped, tapped out?
We could likely get that data. I don't have it ready at this point.
Okay. It would be interesting to know what, what needs we're not able to meet. Maybe, you know, like the suggestions, I hope we don't have to do it, but changing the eligibility requirements, you know, that.
So you want, you would like to know if we have the ability to pull that data from our system?
Yeah.
The ones that have already met their $2,000 max?
I'd be interested in that and I guess maybe I didn't frame my question well, but $700,000 was enough to fund all the requests that came to us this past year?
No, we don't know that until the end of the year. Currently, we're tracking that. We're, based on my projections, we're on track to meet that need. But it's been pretty tight quarter to quarter as we watch that.
Okay. But in the, so in the fiscal year prior to, how did it match up?
So that's on a couple of previous slides. We actually did over a million dollars in disbursements. I think our goal overall is to utilize our hotline operators to connect to other existing resources to promote self-sufficiency.
Got it.
And so some of those caps are there for, because that's the amount that we have budgeted.
And it provides some accountability.
Also, it means it sort of provides sort of an opportunity for residents to get to connected to more long-term supports, whereas not just the one-time call-in to the call center. So we also value our partners in the community that can provide more of that long-term support for residents.
Okay, thank you.
So Misty, today is, today I got an email from a friend who works with members in the community who need help and she wrote me and said this, she's helping this, I think was a young lady. And she listed all of the things that, services that she exhausted. And I didn't check into it, but I sent it to Sam to, but it's not unusual. And sometimes when I find out what they have and haven't done, I can tap into my resources and say, well, you, you still can go to A, B, and C or whatever. But this one, it seemed like they had, seemed like they had tapped out all the places that I use would tell them to go. So in cases like that, it may, you know, and this was probably super unusual, you know, is there a time and a place where, you know, it's like, you know, you've done the United Way, you've done Salvation Army, you know, all of the places that we can take them. Is there, is there a time that we ever, as a city, say, we, we don't have an answer for you? I don't know, you know, is this like, we, we don't have a program or funds for you?
I mean, I would consider our community to be pretty resource-rich. So, you know, I hate to interact with somebody that lives in the city and not be able to give them a Plan B. But what that makes me think of this sort of long-term self-sufficiency or stabilization and what Mr. Payne had indicated was the need for case management and the need for some consistent follow-up and follow-through. So I think depending on the program, yes, we have had to turn folks away because they've met the cap for pathways and that is a hard conversation to have. But we do continue to connect to other resources.
A church or, or some, someone or something. So another question I have is that, you know, if someone comes to us and they are back due for their rent, let's say it's $2,500 and we at this session can only give them only $800 or 1,000, do we say, well, here are some other places where you can go and encourage them to reach out to their, you know, maybe they can pull together $200 from some family friends or what, you know, whatever.
Yep, that's, that's our process, exactly. So we would help them to explore connections that they have in the community, whether it's a personal connection or other organizations' aim or, you know, but, you know, just a lot of different organizations that may be able to help get that balance down. And so we accept updated ledgers or promissory notes from other organizations that said, okay, if Pathways got, got $1,000 to contribute to the fund and then we got this organization or this church that'll do this amount. But in order for us to say, okay, we'll process it, we just need to have sort of documentation that says, okay, everybody's sort of going in on, on making sure the balance gets down.
So do we disperse money if it's partial?
They have to show that they're gonna make the whole payment in order for us to give them funding?
That's correct.
Got it.
The reason for that, in all transparency, is if we end up giving $1,000, we get they can't come up with the $1,250, that person may be in process for eviction, in which case that thousand that we were able to contribute could go to someone else to get them out of arrears and not fall into eviction. So, that's just another decision-making point when we're trying to how to balance how we allocate funds.
Could you go back a slide? Okay, thank you.
Lloyd, do you have any questions? Michael, at this point?
I mean, I would just say, you know, I don't, I don't know what the data is or how, you know, if it could even be collected, but I would just say, you know, informally, from what I've heard from people, worked in eviction diversion, one, 100% agree, you know, it sounds like the need for case management is critical both for that long-term self-sufficiency. But even just someone who's potentially facing eviction homelessness, trying to navigate 15 resources and maybe, you know, trying to sign up for Medicaid, and they're about to live in a motel or a car, just like following through on reaching out to all these agencies and leaving voicemails, who calls back, who doesn't, like, fall through the cracks a lot, even if there are resources out there. And it sounds like, you know, Pathways has been pretty unique in that continuum of care in terms of a resource that is available at that level that, again, I don't know what the data would be, but informally, you know, has stopped a lot of evictions and moves into homelessness. Again, it's not scientific at all, but even on a per capita basis, Albemarle has far more evictions than Charlottesville does. You know, I don't know, you know, how big a role Pathways plays in that. It may play, you know, a large one. All of which say, as I think it's playing, you know, a very important function, even though that need for long-term stability is like the long-term, you know, critical solution. So, I hope unless money is running out before the end of the year, we can try to keep it, the amount of money that can be dispersed, you know, as close to where it is now, just because I feel like down to 1,000 for the average rent in Charlottesville, that's not even gonna cover one month of arrears, you know, if that's all you need to not move, for your landlord to not move forward with eviction. And if it did need to be whittled down because, you know, the money is being dispersed well before the end of the year, I guess my inclination would be, you know, kind of restricting it by having it be primarily for housing expenses, just to try to keep it as an anti-eviction program. But, you know, even in that case, my understanding is the support for utility bills, Salvation Army is capped at $500, which it may be what someone needs, but, you know, there's limitations there as well. But, you know, I'm, I don't know exactly what the right answer would be, you know, if we needed to move forward with kind of limiting eligibility criteria, except to say that $1,000, it seems like, you know, won't really help your average person with, you know, a month worth of rent.
And I can, we were worried about that too. And folks had expressed some feedback and concern over that. I can say anecdotally, in my last staff meeting with the, with the team that Roxanne Jones supervises, that we've noticed some real good, real good, we've noticed some positive contributions from other organizations, this sort of like mutual aid, and where we have had a lot of success with folks being able to, say, $1,000, we might not be able to cover all your rent, but what else you got? And creating some ownership and buy-in from the residents who are requesting assistance. I also add that on the array of sort of the Community Resource Hotline, in our department, we also have Housing Navigation. And so, if we see folks kind of coming in that are falling behind on rent, maybe they actually need to move to a different housing to, so that they can have more stable housing that fits their budget and can kind of need someone to sort of walk them through that process. We have a Housing Navigation Team. So, the hotline operators can say, "Hey, would you be interested in Housing Navigation?" And that would be a direct in-house referral, where they would have someone that says, "Okay, do you need help with your credit? Do you need help with enrolling in benefits so that you have more income?" So, there's some of that pathway that's in-house that our staff can refer internally.
Natalie, you have any other questions right now?
No, that answered some of the things I was thinking about. Thank you.
All right, good. I think we're good for you.
So, real quick, I just wanted, we've talked about several other ways that nonprofits and outstanding agencies are very funded. This is sort of the fundamental list. I'll own up on this one, too. I missed BRAC on this list. I apologize. But these are the ones that we designated as fundamental last year. Almost everybody was funded flat with their request. This year, they were funded flat with their amount to 25. There were a few exceptions to that, but essentially, this, these are those agencies.
So, just to, just again, trying to make sure that we clear up what we knew would be confusing with all the many different things. As far as the second line item that you see there over in the FY '26 proposed line, you see that the recommendation was for them to receive $68,000, which matches what they received for FY '25. And next year, the recommendation that I've made to you to make BRAC a fundamental agency, they would join this list. And that's, that's what that process then looks like as you begin to evaluate each budget going forward.
And the BRAC funding is $250,000?
$250,000, yes.
Remind everybody. Any questions here?
Just to, like, using FAR as an example, that $83,000 is not what they requested. That's just what they got before your adjustments?
No, FY '26 submission is what they requested. That $83,000 represents what they requested. The FY '26 proposed is what was being recommended as a part of the budget. And that's what matches what they received last year in FY '25.
Is it, but that, am I wrong that that's not capturing their submissions through hops and?
Right, not, not totally, no, it does not.
So, what aspect of FAR's program is deemed fundamental?
They are being deemed fundamental. So, that's part of the, that's part of the reconciliation. We, we've had, I guess what's safe to say has been a spirited debate on when we name an agency fundamental, what are we naming fundamental? I think that's part of the consideration for what the cleanup consideration has to be. In my mind, when you put someone on the fundamental list, and part of our conversation has been, these are things that we want others to do that we won't do ourselves, but we want them done. And that is the reason for making them fundamental. So, when we put an organization in this category and the organization is looking to expand what it is that they're doing, they would ask us to consider adding that to what it is that we're deeming fundamental. And again, keeping that out of the competitive process because we've already identified their work as fundamental. And again, fundamental so that we don't have to do it is, is really the rationale behind that.
So, could, could an entity be deemed fundamental but still have an application going in through VCF?
I would suggest no. I would say that because they're coming through the same portal to submit a proposal and letting us know what's going on with them and what are they working on, that will be the same portal that they should let us know what we want to do differently and allow us the consideration of expanding their budget to add that in, which if you look at OAR, all those different line items add up to OAR's total. So, that is, that's what I would say, that over time, the consideration of the addition of each of those line items would be what is the equivalent of going through the competitive round. You just do it using the portal that you have. So, BRAC could next year, two years from now, they shouldn't ask next year, two years from now, could say, "Well, we want to do this as a result of some strategic planning work that we did."
Different programs.
Right. They can put that in as a part of what they submit to retain their fundamental status. And then, the decision would be made on whether or not the $250 goes up or not. And then, these numbers can go down just the same because this is about fitting into the budget. So, no one is guaranteed anything, but this eliminates some of the competition.
The fundamentals are guaranteed something, but they don't have to go through the process.
Hard times, I can't guarantee that I'd be telling you that.
Okay.
But so far, so good. We, I don't think we've said no, unless maybe the COVID years when I wasn't here, we might've told everybody, "No," until we figured out some things. But ordinarily, yes, they would be funded. The question is to what degree?
I did want to make you aware, leading up to Sam's in, exciting end to this presentation. There were two intergovernmental agencies, the jail and the Blue Ridge Juvenile Detention Center. They are both within their budget process about the same time we are. The jail, as you remember, with the renovations, we started talking about $1 million a year for debt service for those renovations. When we were working on the proposed budget, the timing of that project and the debt service had changed some, so we had reduced it in half. They've now adjusted that debt schedule again, which has yielded a $289,000 reduction in their contribution, in our contribution to them for '26. Blue Ridge Juvenile Detention Center has just finished up their budget, and there are some few things in their budget that have resulted in an increase. So, those two net together provide another $234,860 in the budget, which are gonna lead to Sam's next part of presentation.
So, the, I'm sorry.
Could you go back?
Yeah.
Thank you, sorry.
No problem.
So, actually before, so, and again, just trying to make sure that we keep the definition straight and, and help everyone appreciate the different categories. Intergovernmental, these are the relationships that we have where another municipality or jurisdiction is engaged, is contractual in nature, so we've signed an agreement. These are big things usually. I think all of them are pretty big. And these are the kinds of things that when you say they're, like the fundamental, you said, are they guaranteed? These would go first, and then we would go to fundamental and make different determinations because we can't just simply not fund the jail. That's a full operation that is required in five different municipalities, I believe. So, there's, there's an undoing of that for, for different municipalities. So, an undoing of that, that would be required. So, it's a little more complex in nature. So, that's really distinguishing characteristics. Intergovernmental is multi-jurisdictional. Fundamental is really fundamental work that needs to be done in the community. Some municipalities choose to take it on themselves. We're choosing not to. And for the choice to not to, we are dedicating funds or dedicating the opportunity to fund the work to get done.
Can I ask a question? If my memory serves, we've never taken an official vote on the jail renovation. Is that something we do, or does it just get incorporated into the budget and that's that?
So, I believe that the action that will be coming before you is a financing plan that each locality will be approving, but I'm not sure of the vote. I believe that council already approved the renovation?
It happens in June.
Okay. The approval of the renovation or the debt?
We have to get the cost back. We have to actually get a bid back from a contractor. And when we have that number, then, then that will inform the requests from the various municipalities along with the, you know, the amortization schedule and so on. So, that would be the vote? Yeah.
Okay, but so, since it's post-passing this budget, would that be something that? I mean, we're, it looks like here we're already kind of accounting for the potential payment.
Okay, so I, I believe the way that would work is that there's a portion of this number that is the operational support for the jail, and then the debt is broken out separately. I would assume that if something changed with that and the debt were not issued, then we would not be making that payment to them. They would just bill us for what we're actually, what is actually due from us.
So, we're setting it aside, presuming correct?
Right, in anticipation.
Thank you.
All right, so the next slide is to share with you the results of, I guess, I feel like it was a request to determine, is there a process for off-cycle requests? I will tell you that I spent some time with this and opted to not define an off-cycle request process because ultimately, it is hard to manage requests coming in all year long when you have adopted a budget and you're working from an adopted budget that you passed in April and you start working on it in July. And if I had an off-cycle request process that meant every single person could ask me for whatever they want, whenever they want, I would probably not get a whole lot done. And I know you need me to get some other things done. So, what I have opted to do instead was as individual requests came in during our season of considering requests, which is basically October to now, if a request came in and it was outside of a window where there was a competitive round open, then those individuals were informed, you are outside of the competitive round, and your, your requests will be held for council's consideration as a part of the budget process. Therefore, no decision and no commitment of anything. This is what that has amounted to as the requests that have come in. Two of them have been deemed emergencies, and I'll talk to you about each of these, but two of them were deemed emergencies, and I had conversations with the parties involved to bring this list to you and say that there were eight requests that totaled $967,000. I haven't told you that you have $967,000, so that's a big problem for you. But this list is a series of parties that we know, individual groups that are in the community doing good work, not judging anybody for what they're doing and how they're doing it. But these are outside of the competitive round, so they did not submit to CAF, HOPS, or VCF. They came at different times for different reasons. The Huru Foundation just simply is looking to expand their reentry home program for formerly incarcerated individuals. And they were given the opportunity to just tell me what it is that they were looking to do, what do they want? And the request is for $175,000. BRAC, our Continuum of Care, lost a grant that covers roughly a six-month period that they were looking to have replaced. It is deemed an emergency because it would interrupt their ability for work for that period of time. So, I have the asterisk there because I am recommending that we consider funding that. PHA had a two-part request because they had loss of funds from the state for eviction prevention, and they split the amount so that it could be prioritized as to what is needed more so than the other. So, $162,000 is for staff salaries. Without the funds, they would have to dismiss staff. And then, the $50,000 would be cash assistance that would go along with the work that they're doing in the, in eviction prevention space. Yes.
Is this different or the same from the earlier slide?
This is different. From...
There's an earlier slide where, oh, no, that was CRJ, not PHA.
Yeah, yeah, correct. That's what I was thinking.
Sorry, it was the same number, yeah.
Right, so this is, this is PHA's existing eviction prevention program that they're trying to ensure that it continues because this would lead to an interruption, and that's been an alarming matter for them.
So, because this is a program that operates both in Charlottesville and Albemarle, is that, would that dollar amount be reflective of the total request? Or just Charlottesville's share of a request if the localities agreed to split it? Which is an if, but...
So, the original ask was $262,000, and the county has committed $100,000. I forgot to say that.
Okay, so the county has committed?
The county has committed $100,000, and that's why the staff salary number is $162 for us. So, I meant to say that, I'm sorry. Culinary Concepts, Shep Antoine has had a desire to work, do workforce development at ACRJ. The $80,000 figure is a number that I selected just based on what he has proposed, the cost per pupil and potential number of individuals. The question is, is that something that you want to consider outside of the round or direct to come next time? VCCI, which is formerly the Buck Squad, has continued to request a consideration of funds to help them with their surface expansion desires. There was no identified amount. They just simply would like your deeper investment. There was no identified amount. They just simply would like your deeper investment into their work. They are on the VCF list, less than what they have gotten in prior years, so I would imagine that that would be part of what they would ask you to reconsider. The Charlottesville Scholarship Program made a, I'm sorry?
What does VCCI stand for?
Virginia...
It's Central Virginia Violence Interrupters.
Yeah, so it's CVVI, CVCI, or something like that. I'm sorry. Yeah, Central Virginia Violence Interrupters, that's what it is.
Thank you.
Charlottesville Scholarship Program made a presentation to you at some point last year. They referenced they wanted to do an adult side of the program. The city supported the original, the inception of the program, so they're asking you to consider investing in this version of the program. That too would be a significant request that is not really one that falls into a competitive nature, so that would be more of what we would say is a strategic initiative for you to consider. And just recently, this week, you heard from the Dogwood Veterans Memorial Organization that they would like to have you all consider allocating money in the CIP for two year, two consecutive years, so $500,000 each year, in an effort to join the county should the county choose to support the program. I have checked with the county, because this was not a conversation that we had in coordination like we normally would. The request by Dogwood went into the county. It was considered. It doesn't appear that it's being funded. That's a choice of their process. So I would just say to you, if there's an interest in considering this, it would be for next budget cycle's consideration to be integrated into the CIP, as we're not suggesting to you to alter the CIP at this time. So, these are off-cycle requests totaling $967,000 that I just told you you don't have, and now here's my crescendo. You do actually have more than that. The Strategic Initiatives Fund that you have had for some time, that was formerly the Equity Fund, that became this after that was used a few different times, today has roughly $360,000 in it. In the proposed budget, I have recommended increasing that fund to $500,000 with the desire or the intention to fund it at $500,000 every year going forward. So if you don't spend all of it, we will top it off to $500,000 is the plan. And the reason for that is to have you all focus and discipline yourselves to using that pot of money for any changes or any additional contributions you would like to make to various agencies and/or fund special initiatives that you may have for the community at large. Chrissy just told you about the $234,000 that resulted from the inter-agency, intergovernmental agency adjustments, so adding that to the fund, plus the three recommendations that I shared with you about HOPS, CAF, and CDBG, along with $100,000 that we found in the CIP from leftover programming that was allocated out of CAF for landlord, landlord rental, landlord assistance, mortgage assistance, and homeless assistance that was not expended in total, that added up to a collective amount of $104,000. So basically, what I'm saying to you is, I am putting before you a little over a million dollars to allow you to consider the off-cycle requests and any changes you want to add to, I shouldn't say changes, any additions that you would like to make to the Vibrant Community Fund, with that being the maximum amount that is available for you to do so with. And I would caution you on spending all of it at one time, because whatever you carry forward allows you the flexibility to consider other requests that may come as we move into the new budget year and new fiscal year, because as we know, what is happening today in our nation's capital, changes are coming, and we all need to get ready for them, and this would give you the ability to be responsive to some of those changes. Questions?
When would you like us to give you our suggestions?
I am hoping that we would use our budget wrap-up session for your final decisions and recommendations on what to do, and I will be, of course, talking to you in the meantime, trying to find out from you what you would like to do. So the homework assignment for each of you is, what do you want to do? Do you go back through the Vibrant Communities list? Is there someone that didn't get funded that you want to fund? Is there someone that's not funded at the level that you want them to be funded at? The desire for me would be for you to compile that list, make that available to me as soon as possible. We will reconcile that list, because that is not action. That's just a list of recommendations. And based on what appears, we will formulate a list and put that in front of you. And that would be the summation of consideration for that meeting. And that would be the final action in support of the budget.
So as I look at the off-cycle requests, there is no, no agency that has asked for money that causes me to recoil in horror, but I also don't have any real basis for knowing what it is they intend to do with that money.
And I can, I will give you that.
Okay.
Yes, I have all of that. I'll give that to you.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess similar. It's just hard to evaluate without seeing what their specific request is and kind of trying to put that in the context of everything else.
Yeah.
You know, immediately seeing it, you know, I think the eviction prevention work is extremely important, as well as when I'm thinking about just kind of what to prioritize. You know, I think, you know, at a federal level, we're absolutely going to see, you know, an all-out assault on, on working families and poor people, and how do we... We just don't have the money or legal authority to stop all of that, but how can we best kind of triage our limited resources to focus on what's coming there? And that's kind of how I'm, the framework I'm thinking about what to prioritize. So definitely eviction prevention and anything around like case management, continuum of care services, because we are just going to have to triage what we can invest in, unfortunately.
And I would say that is why you see the two asterisks there, and those are the only two that you see, because I'm, I'm joining you in that as the formation, the formulation of my recommendation. That is eviction prevention and homeless services.
Did BRAC grant that was lost? What did that cover?
They're here. If we want to let them explain, I'd rather they speak to it specifically instead of it, because I will butcher it.
And that's in addition to the $250,000?
That's correct.
Budget?
Yeah, this, that, this $250,000 is about their, their operating budget. The $250,000 that is a part of the fundamental is increasing their budget beginning next year. If we did one or the other, we would simply be replacing that with the expansion. I'll leave that to you if you want to.
Sure. Ms. Washington?
Hi. Good evening. I'm Shayla Washington. I'm the Executive Director of the Blue Ridge Area Coalition for the Homeless, also known as BRAC. So to explain, the $250,000 that we requested on top of the capacity building funds is actually due to a number of issues, staffing transition and some technical glitches on the federal government's behalf. Their HUD website was not working appropriately, and my predecessors' previous grants were not transferred over to my account profile unbeknownst to me. So we were not able to submit our application for permanent supportive housing correctly for Region 10 and their Community Services Board Program. So the PSH program currently funds 34 individuals who have been chronically homeless and have disabling conditions, so if we do not have this funding to help pay for their rents and utilities, they could be out on the streets. And these are very disabled, you know, folks who have had a long-term history of homelessness and need severe mental health case supports and management. So, any, anything that you can do to contribute to this program would be really helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good questions?
Thank you. We may, don't go too far. Thank you. Any other comments or, were you, you got any other surprise slides for Sam?
No more surprises.
You keep saying one more, and it's like, more and more.
I was saving the best for last.
We do have one house.
See?
We have to have a date change, so as part of the budget process, we have to have two public hearings. One is on the tax rate and one is on the budget. They cannot be held at the same time. And the state code is very prescriptive in how the tax rate ad has to be run. It cannot be in the legal section, has to be a certain size. There's several things. The ad did run this past Saturday advertising the 17th. However, it ran in the legal section, which made it an invalid ad. So we cannot hold the public hearing on the 17th. So we will be moving the tax rate public hearing to April 7th. We are not, we did not advertise a tax rate increase, but we are required to have the public hearing. So we will be having it on the 7th instead of the 17th. And the public hearing on the budget will be on March 20th, which is part of the community budget forum. So we're, we're going to be sending out some social media about this. We'll also be updating the schedule on the webpage, but just wanted to make you aware.
So it's not a new meeting for us?
Correct. It'll be part of your normal...
Council meeting.
Council meeting.
It's Monday night?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll try to lighten the agenda in case you have a lot of people who want to talk.
We, hopefully, there's no increase, but...
No increase, no?
So just to reiterate, these are the dates, so this is number two of four work sessions. As I mentioned, we'll have the budget public hearing on the 20th. Tax rate's on April 7th. That'll also be the first reading of the budget ordinance. Community budget forum is the 20th, and then we will adopt the budget on April 14th. So April 10th, all these things that we've been talking about tonight, that is what we're, we're calling the wrap-up session. And that is when you'll be able to make changes, and we'll have a spreadsheet and do the math and make the magic right there.
Sorry, which date is that?
The 10th, April 10th.
And the community budget forum is here?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, got that down, okay. Okay. Any other questions or anything before I open up the, the public, in order, public comment, I should say. Okay, so at this point, we'll take public comment on the budget, specifically on the, you know, what we discussed this evening. But I guess if you have comments on other things you can relate to the budget, we'll take that as well. So, Ms., Madam Clerk, do we have a, a list?
Do you want to read it?
You can read them from there, and if that's okay, yeah.
We just ask that you speak from the lectern. So each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. And our first speaker is Deena Gould. Please restate your name and your locality, or the agency that you represent.
Hi, I'm Deena Gould, the Director of Lighthouse Studio. Our team is here to request $24,800 additional funding so that we can continue to provide the community engagement programs we have in prior years. We would also like the city's allocation process to be more transparent. Our programs are known to the city and have a history of success. We have not received an explanation for why, but it appears we have been downgraded to your Tier 3 group despite our peers being in Tier 2, and despite our commitment to DEI and our long history of success in the city. It seems likely that our application provided all the information you requested. For 10 years, we have consistently submitted high-quality applications. This year, we received an exemplary rating for similar submission to the county, but have not been given any feedback from the city. My colleagues will give a few details about our applications, including quotes from community partners. These are city partnerships that we will likely need to eliminate if we don't receive funding. I would like to raise some questions and concerns. Is the goal of the Vibrant Community Fund to offer some amount of funding, even very little, to as many organizations as possible? Or do you want to be a strong and consistent partner to a narrower list of organizations? If you are going to fund more organizations through the Vibrant Community Fund, should the total amount be allocated to the fund also be increased? What additional processes could be put in place to prevent year-to-year swings in funding levels for organizations known to you that consistently show successful outcomes? What types of checks and balances could be placed on the review committee ranking process to prevent one person's low rating from significantly impacting an organization? And please consider making the allocation process transparent with clear explanations about funding proposals prior to the final budget decision. Lighthouse is the only dedicated youth media center in Virginia. We're located here in your city, and our student films and our organization receive national recognition. Our goal for educational programs is to reach as many interested students as possible, regardless of ability to pay. Our goal for the theater is to provide an accessible venue for all, generating discussion and supporting community engagement. I'd like to leave you with an adage that I think reflects our thoughts on the funding allocation. I am reminding of a nursery rhyme. Make new friends, but keep the old. One is silver and the other gold. Lighthouse is gold. We have been serving our community for 25 years. I hope you will stick with organizations that work and not abandon what's working for something you are unsure of and that may be better handled with incremental dollars. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jen Winslow.
Good evening. I'm Jen Winslow. I am the Lighthouse Studio Board Chair. We appreciate this chance to discuss increasing the amount recommended for Lighthouse in the, in the report before you make your final budget decisions. We requested a total of $40,000. This was divided across two applications, one for educational programs and separately for the Vinegar Hill Theater Community Collaboration. After many years of being rated exemplary and important, this year, our application was rated in Tier 3, and the Vibrant Community Fund report is recommending funding us at a level of $11,200. Additionally, this is happening in a year when federal government is making unprecedented cuts to impact our local nonprofits. We continue to offer the same quality programs for our community and submit the same quality information in our application. Our needs have not changed, and the reduced amount creates a material financial strain. We highlighted some of our statistics about our educational program in an email to the City Council, but now I want to share some direct feedback from our educational partners who have benefited from your funding. These are direct quotes from Reclaimed Hope Initiative. "Lighthouse is one of our favorite community partners. Their staff does an exceptional job at adapting their programming for our children with disabilities with openness and compassion." From YMCA, "The impact Lighthouse has had on our students has truly been remarkable. We've seen a significant increase in the students' engagement and creativity, and they've thoroughly enjoyed building relationships with the talented staff. The students are always excited for Lighthouse to visit, and we are very eager to continue this valuable partnership." From the Lugo McGuinness Academy, "Lighthouse has provided our students with invaluable opportunities to delve into the world of filmmaking. Through hands-on experiences with the talented Lighthouse team, our students have not only learned technical aspects, but have also discovered a powerful medium for self-expression and storytelling. The ability to produce short films has given our students a sense of confidence that extends beyond the classroom. This past year, we witnessed an extraordinary project that exemplifies the transformative impact of this collaboration. A group of our students had the chance to create a music video for a song written and performed by one of their peers. This project was a testament to the supportive environment fostered by Lighthouse. The pride of our students felt in seeing their vision come to life was palpable and inspiring. Lighthouse has consistently demonstrated a commitment to nurturing young talent and providing a platform for their voices to be heard. I wholeheartedly endorse their work." Again, the 69% decrease is a significant loss for us. We are asking you to consider an additional $24,800 to bring our total back to $36,000 for Lighthouse for fiscal year '25. Thank you so much for your time."
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kristin Dillahunt.
Hello, I am Kristin Dillahunt with Lighthouse Studio. In my role as Operations Director, I oversee the Vinegar Hill Theater. For eight years, the city has supported our theater community collaborations, and we thank you. Lighthouse purchased the Vinegar Hill Theater in 2015 after it sat on the market for three years. We repurposed this iconic landmark that anchors one end of the downtown mall. We pay over $16,000 in taxes annually to the city of Charlottesville. In 2024, we hosted a total of 82 events, including 34 community partners. We gave $46,000... We gave forty-six thousand directly back to our community in the form of discounted or free rentals to encourage local economic growth for the city and our partners. I'm the main point of contact for front of house running events. I love chatting with our patrons, especially those who visited Vinegar Hill in the earlier days. They truly enjoy the experience, and I think our real butter on the popcorn is also a real favorite. Here's what some of our partners have to say. Big Blue Door, "Charlottesville has very few affordable performance spaces. Our audiences are delighted to see shows in this beloved venue. Our friends at Lighthouse are able to offer this space at an affordable rate because of city support. This funding impacts not only Lighthouse, but small companies who are able to invite audiences to performances in the city, audiences who often visit local restaurants before and after the shows. Home to Hope, which is a department within the city of Charlottesville. We recently screened the Netflix special Thirteenth Amendment, which would have been out of our budget if not working with Lighthouse. The screening was very educational and sparked other ideas of collaboration based on, upon the reentry population. We support Lighthouse as they have supported our community and program genuinely." Ty Cooper, "The indie short film series founded at Vinegar Hill Theater in 2019 has attracted filmmakers to travel from cities across the U.S. Fast forward to March of 2025, the series has converted into a full three-day festival using venues downtown guaranteed to boost the local economy. This happened because of Lighthouse Studio and the Vinegar Hill Theater." Jeff Luck, "As a filmmaker, I am aware of the opportunities to experience independent and local cinema are typically only found in large cities. But for more than twenty years, I have seen our community deeply enriched by the inspiring work of Lighthouse, sorry. I have, I know of no other program that does as much for aspiring young filmmakers, including many from underserved populations anywhere in the country. And since its acquisition of Vinegar Hill Theater, the organization also provides a vibrant and affordable venue that serves everyone who calls Charlottesville home. Please continue to support this significant institution, its very essence of what makes our town and quality of life so special. Thank you."
Thank you.
Kate Lambert.
Good evening. My name is Kate Lambert. I'm the CEO of Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Virginia. Our organization provides year-round, comprehensive youth development services for young people in the city of Charlottesville between the ages of five and eighteen. We are open every day after school, all day during the summer, and we offer Saturday programs for teens. Our programs focus on academic success, health and well-being, character and leadership, and life and workforce readiness. Not only are we a reliable resource for young people in our community, but we are also an affordable and reliable resource for families. Families who are pursuing their educations, who are pursuing their careers, who are supporting their families, and they know their children are in a safe and positive place when they're not at home and they're not at school. I'm very proud that thanks to your support, our membership fees to families are only thirty-five dollars for the whole year, and we know how expensive childcare is in our community. I'd like to thank council for their increased funding this year in FY25. It has made a world of difference in our ability to serve children in this community. We have been recommended for a thirty-seven percent decrease in funding in FY26, and what that means is that twenty-five children are going to be riding the bus home instead of taking the school bus to the club after school. It means that they're going to go home where they have very limited supervision, where we don't know whether they have access to food. They may be playing video games, they may be watching TV. Instead of coming to the club, where we know they're getting healthy snacks, where we know that they are participating in enrichment programs like tutoring in literacy, in reading, and math, where they are participating in arts programs, STEM programs, financial literacy, career exploration, active, healthy lifestyles, they're playing basketball and other sports and games. We want them to be coming to the club instead of going home on the bus. It's a better place for them. And so I want to thank Mayor Wade for his recommendation for increased funding for the club in FY26, and I'd like to respectfully ask council to consider restoring the Boys and Girls Club to its current level of funding of a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in FY26. Thank you very much.
Next is Marnie Bentley. Okay. Jane Colony Mills.
Good evening. I'm Jane Colony Mills. I'm the Executive Director at Loaves and Fishes Food Pantry. First of all, I want to thank the thirty-plus grant reviewers for going through the Vibrant Communities Funds process of reviewing grants. I've done that myself, and it's a task. So I appreciate that you all included us in the budget again this year, and thank you, Mr. Sanders, for your inclusion as well. I would love for us to be fully funded. We've learned from the County of Almaral that they're going to, they're proposing to give us forty thousand dollars to replace one of our freezers, which is in pretty dire condition, and so an additional six thousand dollars from the city could match that and some additional requests to private funders. For those of you who aren't familiar, Loaves and Fishes provides food to anyone who comes through our doors. In 2024, we gave food to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand people, and twenty-five percent of them were from the city of Charlottesville. That was a total of two-point-eight million pounds of food. What we provide is a week's worth of healthy nutritious groceries that are customized for special diets, cultural preferences, and household size, and we're currently serving an average of seven to eight hundred people a day, four days a week, and a total of ten thousand plus people a month. Excuse me. We have someone who speaks Spanish at all four of our distributions and someone who speaks Dari, Pashto, and Arabic at two of them. So we're trying to accommodate the variety of people who live in our community and our need of our help. And we also have a full-time dietitian who teaches cooking classes and provides samples and recipes to introduce people to new types of food, particularly healthy food. We really are rebranding ourselves as the Healthy Food Pantry because we are so aware of how a poor diet that is driven by lack of income can lead to chronic disease and poor health throughout their lifetime. We've got a lot of partnerships with UVA Health now, and they're doing a lot of referrals to us for the lower-income clients who are coming through their doors. And so we would love for your continued and possibly increased support of our work. As Counselor Payne noted, some chains in our federal funding are really going to impact us, and thirty percent of the food that we get is from the USDA, and if that is reduced, then that's reduced. And if the SNAP benefits are cut, then that means SNAP benefit people who are losing their benefits will be coming to Loaves and Fishes for one of life's basic elements, which is food. I don't really want to touch the housing issue, but we know that a lot of people we support are putting all of their money into their housing, and that's why they come to us for the free food. Thanks.
Lisa Caprano.
Hi, I'm Lisa Capraro with Live Arts, and I live in the city of Charlottesville in Fifeville. Thank you all so much for this opportunity and for your time tonight. I just wanted to address the Vibrant Community Fund. As many of you know, Live Arts has been in the community for thirty-four years, forging theater and community, which is our mission. We're a volunteer-powered organization with over twelve hundred volunteers, and we serve the community in a various amount, array of ways, including our main stage productions, our Waterworks New Works Festival, our year-round education programs, and our community partnerships. But what we asked for specifically through the fund was to fund our education program. We have an immersive summer camp all summer long, which brings families downtown, and the children learn wonderful ways of building confidence and learning how to bring theater into their lives. There's employment and internships that happen at the theater, and we consider ourselves with the volunteers and the interns as a pipeline for future art professionals. There is creative exploration and critical thinking that happens. We have started to offer free drop-in classes for the community, for both children and adults, and we are expanding our scholarship program for summer camps. This summer, we're going to be offering a hundred percent supportive scholarships, so there is no barrier to come to Live Arts to have a summer camp experience. We can't do that without the support of the community. We do get a lot of support, but we depend upon the city funds. We were slated for half of the eighteen thousand that we received last year, unless, as Mr. Snook mentioned, I don't know if it's in another department or not, but I think that it was funded at half. But I could be corrected on that. And then just a reminder how critical the arts are for the city and especially for downtown right now. We are a beacon on Water Street. We create jobs, we attract tourism, we boost the local economy. Many people come and see a show, and they eat either before or after. So we really do contribute to the economic vitality of downtown, and that's very necessary right now. I will say, we also depend on NEA funding, which we do not think that we will continue because of the compliance regulations that we will not meet, but we stand firm to our commitment to serve the community, to serve our diverse group of people that come through our doors, our volunteers, our staff, and our patrons. So thank you again, and please consider just that little bit of boost, which would help us really augment those scholarships and continue to serve the community with our vibrant educational opportunities. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Next is Daniela Preitzer.
Hi, good evening. My name is Daniela Preitzer. I am the Executive Director of the Bridgeline. We serve people with brain injuries, and just as a reminder, brain injury can be a trauma, car accident, for instance, can caused by a brain tumor. We work with she, so we have now clients with suffered strangulations, can have an infection of the brain, and we also serve people with after-stroke. We're the only provider for these specific services in this area here. We serve Charlottesville and also thirteen other counties, but there's nobody else who provides these specialized services. What we do is we have three main programs. One is a residential program where we have our own homes and people are living there, and we have funded since 2015 and have always been rated exemplary or solid. We have, we added then through a merger, a day program. It's a pre-vocational program where people learn skills that they need to re-enter the workforce or even volunteer jobs. We have always been rated exemplary or solid, and this year, exemplary. And then the case management, I heard a lot of case management mentioned here today. That's a critical component of what we do, to connect people with other service providers. Whatever we cannot help with, we know somebody who can help with, can help with that need, that need. That was a new program in the early 2020, and we have been funded since 2021 and rated solid this time. And so when I, and I just want to remind, a brain injury can happen to anyone, anytime, anywhere. It can happen very quickly. And so I, when I saw the budget recommendations, I was surprised. The residential program is proposed to be funded, but all the other, the two other programs, day program and case management program, which has, have always been funded and rated exemplary or solid, are dropped. There's no funding for that. Well, I believe these people are very deserving, and they need the help because otherwise they fall into, you know, where do they go? And I do believe also what we do in these programs falls into the, you know, into the vision statement of the city. We provide, we help with economic impact and jobs, we help with health, public safety, and it certainly falls under diversity, equity, and inclusion because everybody we serve is a person with a disability, and they are in the very, in the extreme low income. We have nobody who's rich in our programs. So I, that all leads to a drop of forty-four thousand dollars this year, and I would really
Thank you.
Would like you to consider to, sorry, I'm over. I didn't realize.
Yeah, thank you.
To reconsider funding these programs.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and I wanted to thank everybody that spoke before me, because they spoke so well at Lighthouse, as well, especially Mayor for the Boys and Girls Club, which I've supported through my life before. I'll introduce myself, I'm Cliff Seltzer. Now, I'm here to speak on behalf of the Bridgeline. I have a brain injury because of a car accident about sixteen years ago, where I was rear-ended by a drunk driver coming to work in Charlottesville. Because of the brain injury, I spiraled down, became unemployed, and eventually homeless. My entire health was affected. About six years ago, I learned about the Bridgeline from staff and physicians at UVA Medical, and became a member of the case management program. The staff helped me get my life organized because a brain injury can really leave you disorientated, unable to do simple tasks. I have stable housing now, and they also helped me get, during the pandemic, Bridgeline helped me get, you know, receive reading glasses so I could see better, and a computer with internet and a phone to stay socialized and connected, especially with the UVA care professionals and the Bridgeline case management. And they helped me with many health challenges. For instance, I have a lot of dental issues from the accident, and they connected me with dental schools and helped me pay for some of the things that weren't covered by Medicaid or Medicare, but yes, people, all of you know about insurance these days. I found friends and peers who understand what I'm going through in a safe place where adults and survivors of TB with brain injuries thrive. I cannot imagine where I'd be without the Bridgeline, and I just ask you, please support the day program, case management for the survivors of brain injuries. And some of them today are in wheelchairs, they're, my friend today, a nice African young man, were trying to fix little things around the clubhouse, and another one's can only speak by a computer, by tapping things in on a computer. So I'm trying to speak for those that can't speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Doyle.
Hello, I'm Dr. Mary Ann Assad Doyle with the Center for Nonprofit Excellence, and I wanted to start out by saying thank you to the volunteers who read the grant applications, to the staff with the city who managed all the processes, and of course, to City Council for approving these grants and really for providing this funding to an incredible sector here in the city of Charlottesville that supports so many people. And of course, on behalf of CNE, I want to thank you for your support of CNE and for including us in this grant process. I want to share a little bit about what we do as a learning partner and as an advocate and advisor for the sector. But I have to pause and say, I'm just really proud. I mean, this room full of nonprofits that is doing, again, as I said, tremendous work, but also tremendous presence here, right, in terms of advocating for themselves and advocating for the people who they serve. So I want to thank each of you for being here. As you all know, the world changed since we submitted our application originally just a few months ago, and CNE has been standing in this space and trying to do our best and working twenty-four hours a day just to collect the information and provide the information and really stand in this advocacy space on behalf of the sector. And we're tremendously grateful, as I said, for the support and look forward to continued support and continued partnership with the city as we continue to do this good work. We don't even know what the ramifications will be of the changes from a federal perspective, whether it's with regard to funding. whether it's with regard to funding or with regard to policy. We don't know what the ripple effect of those funding changes and of those policy changes will be to this sector. And so again, we can't, we can't thank the city enough for being willing to stand alongside us and advocate, both with regards to funding these social services, but also really continuing to maintain that focus on the most vulnerable populations and underrepresented and underserved populations in our communities. And so I would love to request of all of you to consider that CNE has been in this space here in Charlottesville for now almost 18 years and really needs your support at this time so that we can lift up the sector and work alongside. And so we would request, of course, we're grateful for the funding that we have been allocated, request, of course, fully funding the initial request that CNE has made so that we might be able to continue to do this work. And if you didn't receive it, you know, one of those pieces is our upcoming convening on the 24th of March. I hope that you can be there and learn a little bit more about and have some clarity on the executive orders that are coming through, the federal funding freeze. I hope you can be there and be part of that conversation and help educate us on how to support you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Judith Selzer.
Good evening. I'm Judith Selzer. I'm the new CEO of the Jefferson Area Board on Aging, and I'm here with our retiring CEO, Marta, who everybody knows and loves. And so wanted to just, of course, echo all the sentiments of my colleagues across the room, to share appreciation for everybody who served reviewing all the grants, the volunteers, the staff, the council. You all have tremendously difficult decisions to make, and I know everyone's hearts are incredibly big in wanting to serve everybody across the community. At JABA, we serve the aging community and individuals living with disabilities. I want to say thank you again to the council for your 50 years of support. You created us in partnership with five other jurisdictions about 50 years ago, and this year, we are celebrating our 50th anniversary. As everybody has stated before me, the needs are great and they continue to grow. At JABA, we work to ensure that those who are older adults continue to have the community's arms wrapped around them, whether that be our senior helpline, our aging services coordinators, our case managers, our home-delivered meals, our respite and enrichment centers, and the list goes on and on. So many tremendous partners here in the room. I appreciate all you're doing and look forward to continuing to collaborate with you. But just wanted to say thank you for the 50 years of investment, the 50 more years of investment I hope we continue to all make together to ensure that everyone in our community is visible, valued, and heard. At our 50th anniversary opening celebration on March 26, we'll be having an open house, and I just want to invite everybody to attend, share it with your neighbors, and let them know about the services that are there. And again, thank you all for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak that didn't sign up? Again, we'll have several more public input process. This information is really helpful. I was taking notes for, from the speakers, so I want to thank you all for coming out this evening. Any other action? Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
No move.
Second.
Thank you.